Area highlighted in red, you'll notice there's a very small portion to the east of the Mobile Home Park that is not part of this as it goes to the river. That area is currently the property owned by Garf, I guess you'd say Garf Automotive Group or Garf Group. So that area is not part of the rezon request. And you'll see the statements and requests of the rezon application, payment being paid, and then all of the thereafter supporting public hearing notice, request requirement items that have been provided for the public hearing this evening. So with that, I know it's quite a bit of information, but I'll defer to the planning commissioners. We have a few minutes for any questions or comments you may have from me or Mr. Steiner, who is with us this evening, or Mr. Brooks, who's also with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Do we have anybody? Any questions?
Where this is a rezon request and a public hearing, is it appropriate for questions from us during that time of the property owner as far as? I know we can't get into specifics as far as, you know, what are you going to be doing and how big is it and everything that's going to be involved, but just basically moving forward with intent and, and I know that that's still broaching back up on that topic, but, you know, what actions they've taken and what consistent actions can we foresee in the future?
To answer that, and maybe Mr. Brooks can weigh in if you feel desired to, to answer that, yes, following the public hearing when it comes back to the planning commission for discussion, that is not changed to answer questions. Now, one thing I do want to advise the planning commission about, this is sometimes a temptation with, with public hearings, it's not a question and answer discussion opportunity. A public hearing is just to hear the comments of the residents and the, and the public at large that may want to comment, and they, they may want to enter into a question and answer type dialogue, but it's not, that's not what this is for. An easy way to, to share that or discuss that with the public is to say, we'll take note of your comments and discuss them after the public hearing is closed. So if that comes up, just note that.
I would just emphasize, and you pointed this out, Mr. Anderson, this is a rezon, and so questions and comments and discussions need to be focused on that. We don't want to be deviating into future speculation on what's going to happen and stuff like that because we're not there yet, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question. I know there's going to be probably some public opinions about it, about the people that will be, I guess, forced from the property or whatever. Is that, that shouldn't be something that we figure into on the approval or the disapproval of their rezon request, is it? It's, it really comes down to, again, Mr. Brooks can help me with this, it comes up to a thumbs up, thumbs down decision relative to the general plan, the future land use of the area, is it in the best interest of properties around the area and Riverdale at large, the residents? I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors to weigh in there. So, you had to be, not you, but the planning commission, you need to be careful about any intent or future understanding of what the property owner will do with residents or their, their living at that location. A rezon is just that, it does not affect their current living and continued living at the location even if the zoning was changed.
Okay, that's, that was basically answered what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Mike, I have a question regarding the general plan. Based on what this says, it's planned commercial high in that area, which it's noted that the proposed rezon may not be fully in compliance with what the general plan is. Is that, but the, the existing trailer park is not in, in compliance with that either?
Mr. Herman, just to clarify, it, it's not, the general plan, master land use plan designates it for medium, medium density residential. It's the green portion on that map in the upper right corner.
You know, Chairwoman, if I could speak here, and I would have said this at some point in time anyway, it brings up a good point, though. When I come in and do your trainings and we talk about open meetings and things like that, and the one thing I always tell you is make sure you stick with what is within your authority. So what you guys are assigned to deal with is, is Title X and going hand in hand with that is your general plan. So make sure you stick with that and just follow what you have there. What we don't want to do is start deviating and doing things we shouldn't be doing. Follow what, what's there. And, and that goes, a follow-up, Blair, to what you said there. I mean, unless you could tell me somewhere where in Title X or in the general plan that it talks about, you know, what we would put emphasis on as far as consideration goes, unless it's in there, then you don't consider it and you won't find that in there anywhere, so.
Any other comments or questions before we adjourn into our meeting? Any discretionary items or anything, anybody?
There will be a public comment during the regular meeting.
Amy, I just wanted to make a comment that, I don't know if you know it or not, but the mall has been resold. Somebody asked about that, I think Blair asked that last time, what was happening to the mall? It has been resold. Did you see that in the news? Okay.
Yeah, it seemed to announce for $20 million sell. It sounds like they're just trying to do their, their pay off their debt service on the loan to acquire it. So it sounds like that the entity that defaulted, they're just paying off what they owe and clearing it out so that they can control it.
Okay, you guys ready to adjourn to our meeting? Let's go. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to, for the record, all planning commissioners are in attendance. This is the time now for any public comment, not regarding, not regarding the rezon, there will be a time for that. But do we have any other public comments? Do you have any, Shaili, from YouTube?
Can I just ask if you didn't sign the roster? Can I get you to put your name on it if you haven't? Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move into presentations and reports. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. As was noted in the work session, it's just a quick summary. Five Below Store will be hopefully opening in very, very soon time period. They have cleared all of their building inspections, should be finalizing their licensing and being open for business very shortly. The Harbor Freight Tools is also very close. They just need to complete some items for their final inspection and they should be opening for business very soon. I did note that there is a future rezon request coming to the planning commission for first review on the 13th and a site plan amendment for a commercial retail property in the community on that same date, will likely be there for a preliminary review. Also legislative session update, that'll be forthcoming. I have a seminar presentation tomorrow of all the land use items that will affect legislatives or affect us going forward. There are some significant changes that we'll have to take place and some changes to city codes or all of the land use that we'll have to look at and working through. So be ready for that, some other public hearings associated with those changes. And then, and I think that's everything that I noted. So with that, I will defer to, yeah, any other questions or comments relative to that and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Going down to our consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from March night, 2021 work session and March night, 2021 regular meeting. Anybody have any changes? Corrections?
I make a motion, do we approve the concerned items?
I second it.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. There's a ton, can you hear him? There's a ton of people coming in here. We have quite a few people joining us. Okay, action item number one, public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding a rezon request for property located at approximately 671 West, 4400 South, Riverdale, Utah, 84405. A zoning change from Mobile Home Park Recreational Vehicle Park, RMH1, zoning to multiple family residential R4 zoning requested by H&amp;H 39th Street LLC.
I make a motion, do we have a public hearing? Would you, would you like me to do a quick intro, really quick?
Yes, and speak loudly, please.
Okay. So H&amp;H 39th Street's the petitioner in the matter. This is for a, a request for a change from Mobile Home Park Recreational Vehicle Park, RMH1 zoning to multiple family R4 zoning to allow for the possibility of future development for some form of multiple family residential unit facilities on the property at a later date. Neighboring properties around it include RMH1, R5 zoning, and the Weaver River is near to the property as well as some C3 zoning in Riverdale Road. The request is approximately 4.62 acres of land near 240, 400 South, Riverdale Road, 700 West and adjacent properties. It was required by state code. Public hearing has been noticed and advertised for this property in compliance with that state code, and we received prior to the hearing, multiple comments, telephone inquiries, about eight to 10 calls prior as well as we have a letter that we've received. Following the public hearing, use the, the planning commission can make a decision to provide a recommendation to the city council to support the rezon, not support the rezon or even table with the sufficient findings of facts for the decision that's made. The general plan used for this area is set as residential medium density. Proposed rezon request and project concept requested use is partially in compliance with the land use designation and somewhat supported by the general plan language for area seven of the general plan. However, the land use master plan definitions don't seem to support this request as it relates to the current designation of residential medium density. Documentation regarding the definition of residential medium density and language from the general plan area seven are provided in the packet. You have all that documentation following, following that, there is the application documentation from Mr. Steiner and Mr. Hatch in their group relative to the request.
If that makes any sense.
And with that, I would defer to whoever you would like to proceed with the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, we have several people here that would like to speak.
I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
We've opened, we've opened up the time. Opened up the time for the planning, or for the, for you to speak. Please state your name, your address, and try to keep it to three minutes.
Do we need to ask for the council to vote on opening the public hearing? Amy?
Again, it was really, really noisy. Blair, do you want to do that again, please?
Yeah, make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't think you guys have enough seating for everybody that's here.
I know, so that's what I'm making my city attorney and repeat on, we have to try to remain social distancing. You guys can hear everything that's going on out there and you all will get a chance to speak.
We'll let every one of you speak.
We just need to make sure that we're not cramped like we are right now. So if there's a way for you guys, stay a family, if you came with that person, totally fight, but if you guys can remain six feet, you will be able to hear it out there. The microphone goes out there. So as best as we can, we just need to maintain social distancing, please.
Why don't you guys get a bigger place?
This is our property, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what he said.
Wait, wait, we got to keep this quiet and peaceful. Okay, now is the time, like I said, if you would like to come, stand in front of that laptop because of, because of COVID, we have to do social distancing and we're on YouTube so the other planning commissioners can see everything going on, the city attorney, everybody's watching and seeing, so you are being heard, I promise. And state your name, your address, and please try to keep it to three minutes.
My name's Jason Williams. I live in trailer 51 of the zone.
Can you guys hear him?
No, we need, he's muted.
So my name's Jason Williams. I am in trailer 51 of the residence.
We need to push the unmute button on his microphone.
I'm being special, sorry. There you go.
There you go.
We good? My name's Jason Williams. I'm in trailer 51. And I, I'm going to start out first with understanding that this is not much that we're going to be able to say. We realize you're the city and you're going to want something nice in there instead of our trailer park, but we are a lot of people who don't have the ability to afford a nice place that's going in there.
We can't hear it out here. We can't hear nothing out here. I don't need to talk, and she said we could hear it out here, we can't hear nothing.
So. With, with that, I, I will say that.
She said that we could hear you guys out here, there'll be speakers and we can't hear nobody, so I'm telling you, guys know the people out here can't hear him speak. Thank you.
This is going to be a real problem.
That's what she said.
I, I hope that I can represent us in a way that's going to be public and understanding. Our job is going to be to help everyone realize, don't stop paying your rent, attack the owners and have them understand, they need to compensate us for what's happening. If the city has the ability to make sure that we get compensated as part of the zoning plan, please help us out. We don't want to go to the media and do everything that other trailer parks have done in order to get this done. We're come to the city to ask you to help us. I, I paid child support for years, I can't afford a place. I'd love to have a home. I used to have a home before I went through divorce. I'm current on my child support, that's why I live in a trailer park, but I just can't move out into another place, costs $10,000 to move my trailer. I'm probably one of two trailers that can be moved. The rest of these people's trailers are going to be demolished. So compensation is what we're here for. There's not much we're going to be able to do to the city because you're going to love to have a beautiful apartment complex there. So guys, just realize why we're here. We need to group together, pay your rent, don't stop paying your rent because they'll just evict you and we'll have nothing to be able to say. We may need to get a lawyer to represent us. That's all I have.
Fix the camera, I promise. There you go.
My name is Tanya Rotenda and I live in trailer 23.
You guys, this is all being recorded, so you don't, please put your cell phones away. It's all recorded, it's all public information.
Can you just put it in the pocket?
Okay.
I'll try. My name is Tanya Rotenda and I live in trailer 23. I'm on disability. I have a disabled roommate. There is no way that we can afford to move our trailer and still be able to survive. I've called three different trailer parks and three different movers today alone, and none of them will touch my trailer because it's a 1972. So they're just going to just take everything that I've built up in there and just destroy it. And for what? To put other families in there. That's not fair or right to anybody. And I just want you guys to know, this has been on the table before. Why can't it just stay there? I mean, look at all these places that could be redone. There's Walmart, the Shop Co. There's Best Buy that had a building built, then moved to another building or vice versa, and it's getting torn down. There's property right there. Why do they have to take what we have? It's not right.
My name's Wolf Heath. Me and my wife lives in number 22. We've lived there for multiple years, 15 years, and we lived down on 23rd Madison for seven years and the gang banging down was really bad where we were living. We had no problems. We've had no vandalism done, we'd had no gang problems. Nobody's ever done any damage to my house. It's one of the most best neighborhoods for our old trailer park that I've ever lived in. And for me and my wife, we've been known to be the peacemakers because we don't go around causing problems, we help each other out when we can, we're pretty neighborly when we can, but we don't get too much involved because they got their things, we got ours. But as far as the building problem is, it's, I mean, they're building new places all over. And like Tony Tony says, we're on disability too and we can't afford to move, but we do like our trailer house, it's one of the best ones in there. And the neighborhood, I still think it's a heck of a lot better than any other neighborhood around Riverdale. Like I said, there's no violence, there's never been any hatred or violence or anything like that. It's been pretty, I'm acting like me and my wife, we're both LDS, we're drug dealers, and I just hope that they don't close us down because we do deserve to stay in our homes. And those lives around us are pretty good people too and they deserve to stay in their homes too. That's all we got. Thank you.
We can keep it quiet, it just keeps us more recording. And please again, put your cell phones away, this is all being, it's all public, it's all recorded.
My name is Jan Ewing and I'm an 18-year live entertainment worker who's been out of work since March 9th of 2020, and I've lost my home. I put everything I had into the trailer that I'm living in now and I got nowhere to go and nobody's going to take my trailer. And I'm still not going to work probably for another nine months at the minimum. And nobody's trailer in here, I don't think is going to be able to move anywhere. So if you do this, you're taking away our homes. We got nowhere to go. Nowhere. We don't have no money to go nowhere. That's all I want to say.
I just wanted to do this real quick. You've got that petition signed, everybody.
My name is Amanda Gomez and I had bought in trailer 79 a while back, and it was on that second row by the river. The owners let me buy it and they knew that Ken Garf was going to build that parking lots, that parking lot that is there. So they let me buy it and let me live there for six months before they told me I had to move the trailer or demolish it. I am a military veteran. I followed my husband around for many years and raised our kids, so I moved here with nothing and I bought this trailer with the last money I had, trying to keep my kids a roof over their head, and they let me live there for six months thinking that I was going to have a place to live, and they just threw me out, me and my kids out. And my mother, she helped me get the trailer there, she is living there now and she is on disability and she can't sell her trailer, she is going to have to pay to demolish it and she's got years of memories with us kids and stuff and for her to find somebody to come and move all that and demolish her trailer, it's, it's going to be devastating. So, and that's my story. And also I know there's another family here that just recently moved in, my daughter's friend, they moved from Salt Lake and bought a trailer in that trailer park and it's been a month or two and they just barely bought it and nobody told them that this is going to be demolished. So basically they're in the same boat that I am and I ha, I feel for you, but you know, it's, it's wrong what they are doing to people. Like I say, I don't know about the people that just bought their trailer, but I was out $6,000 plus six months worth of rent and bills and stuff when I had to save up to take my kids somewhere else. So that's my story. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Xavier. I live in, oh. I live in lot seat, lot 10, and even though we just moved out there, most of these people can't afford to get houses or apartments or anything, it's expensive out here. And if they lose these homes, most of these people will be homeless, at, at least some of you. And most of these people have kids, have children, you're taking their home away from them. There's no ifs, ands or buts, we're supposed to be helping our future and helping our lives and survive. Out here, it's all about the strongest feed on the weak. And that's what these people are doing, they're trying to get more money even though they're just going to lose it. Or while not lose it, but you know what I mean. What I'm saying is, these are good people. They don't mess with each other, they're just live out their lives and survive. If you take that away from them, a lot of them are not going to, not going to be here. So please understand, a lot of people need homes, especially right now. It's going to be hot, it's going to, it's going to kill people. I know that doesn't mean anything, but I'm saying is it's a bad idea to get rid of homes and build condos. You can build condos, but they're not going to be as good at, like you kind of know what I mean, as in, a lot of people are not going to buy those condos because this is in a bad spot. It really is in a bad spot. Like I could drive through there and not even notice it. It's a bad spot. And sorry for taking so much time, but it's all about these people. This is the public. We should care about the public, not for condos. We, condos can be replaced by something else, anything else. But they should at least get, at least let them have their homes. That's it. You're welcome.
Hey, is, is this being broadcasted on the internet?
Yes, it's on YouTube.
It's live on YouTube. Where can we punch into?
You do Riverdale City, Utah, and it will be a live video. You can click on it.
My name is Lola. I am.
Can we ask questions on there too?
Yes, you can type it in and I'll read it.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Lola and I'm from trailer number 22. My husband just spoke to you guys not too long, but anyway, I've been crying every night knowing that I don't want to lose my home and we built so much and, you know, a lot of people came together and helped us out with our community and, and going to another community would just be hopeful, hopeless, and I don't, I don't want to start over again. I, we've created a future. I had to, we're on both disability and, and I have, I have no choice but to get a part-time job just to, you know, keep. just to, you know, keep our, a roof over our head. And I'm so glad that we are part of our community and we've made so many friends and, and I don't wanna lose that. So this is my story. Thank you. Thank you for your-
Hello, my name's Jayden Arland. Uh, I'm also, oh, okay. Uh, hello, my name's Jayden Arland and, uh, I'm also from Lot Ten, uh, the guy with the jacket. Uh, he's my friend and, uh, if it wasn't for me, he'd be homeless because, uh, he's a single man. And, uh, with how much he gets paid nowadays, which is usually around twelve dollars, that's six hundred dollars every paycheck if you make a bi-weekly paycheck. And this trailer park, uh, is what a lot of people can afford because they make that six hundred dollars every two weeks. So if you replace it with something like a condominium, that's raising the rent probably closer to twelve hundred dollars, uh, which is a lot of people, uh, can't afford that. Sorry if I'm a little shaky. I'm not used to public speaking. Uh, but also during a time like this, during the pandemic or post-pandemic, uh, depending on your view, uh, we shouldn't be taking away low-income housing, uh, to people like this because every single, uh, you know, grown-up I know, or at least half of them, have, uh, started out in a trailer park. Or a trailer because they're low-income, they're almost half the pricing of a regular house. So it's a lot less, you know, saving time. Uh, so for a lot of these people, this is all they can do, but, which sucks, including for me, but, uh, yeah, that's my case.
Just one moment, sir. Can all of you, listening on WebEx Air everything?
We need it to be quiet out there, so this echo stops.
My name is Chris Montgomery. Live at Leslie's Mobile Home Park, Lot Forty-seven. And Leslie's, Leslie's currently is low-income affordable housing that over fifty-five families depend on to get by with the income we have. I just moved in after searching for three months, about a month ago, to find a place that could aff, that I could afford and be able to continue working on improving my situation. Now you want to rezone this property to put it in housing that I and my neighbors can't afford. With the COVID-nineteen pandemic not over yet, a lot of our jobs are up in the air every day. If we had to move, we could be put into a disastrous situation and be unable to afford housing. Do you have a place for us to go? If so, where? Is it near my work, like this place is? Who's gonna cover my costs to move? Costs include deposits, application fees, first and last month's rent, moving expenses, et cetera. Thank you.
Hi, hi, my name is Randy Gurario. I live in trailer nineteen. I've lived in Leslie's Trailer Park for thirty-one years. And it's been mostly a wonderful experience, except for the last twenty-four, or the last four years. Now, most of these people's trailers are too old to be moved, period, so they will be demolished. Maybe I'm one of the fortunate ones that I could get it to be moved. However, it's between eight and ten thousand dollars to move the trailer, if I could find a park that would, has an opening. Now, when the new management took, took over, I won't say that I was assured, but they told me that their goal was to take out the bad trailers, move in some new trailers, manufactured homes, et cetera, et cetera. One of my questions was if I was getting ready to put in new floors in my home, I had to put in new ceiling. I was told, "Don't worry, you're not wasting your money. We'll be here to take care of you and we're not going anywhere." So that's not true, and I'm out another five thousand. My trailer is worth about thirty thousand dollars. And that's gonna be gone if I can't find a place to move it. Most of these people that live there are low-income. They've been there quite a while. They don't have an opportunity to move their trailer. They're just gonna be out on the street. Now, from my experience with this management company, they did nothing that they said they was going to do. So I don't know what kind of management company they are, but if you're gonna put in, you know, some high-density three-hundred apartments for two thousand dollars a month, which is not low-income, I wouldn't trust them to, uh, manage those. You'll end up with the same situation you got, pretty much. You need management in there, is all that trailer park needs. But anyway, I just truly object to this for many levels. This gentrification of low-income neighborhoods is, is not a good thing for anybody. Not for the city and especially for us. That's all I've got to say.
I don't know how close I need to be to this. Uh, my name's Taylor Berry. I had been living in trailer number sixteen. Uh, just to kinda go from, uh, point A to point B in terms of our particular situation, uh, we're in the process of selling our trailer for the last four months and, uh, we obtained a buyer. Great. You know, four months, working hard, trying to get, uh, get it out there in the market. Uh, the buyer was actually approved by H and H, uh, where they took in a background check and application fees. Uh, shortly thereafter, H and H submitted a proposal to the city, which, uh, was the consideration of rezoning and had failed to notify our buyer of such change. Our realtor, I, I actually heard this on the news, so we got ahold of our realtor and saw that the note was on our front door instead of, uh, certified mail. So that's also a concern. Uh, so our realtor let us, uh, know and our buyer know that this was happening and our buyer actually backed out of a twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollar sale. Uh, there are ethical concerns here, along with potential legality concerns, which Eric Rodriguez and I may pursue litigation for against H and H, uh, if that is to be put into question. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, my name is July and I live in trailer number forty. I just moved there maybe about six months ago or so. I wasn't aware of all this, this happening, but I was just wondering if, if, if we have to move, is there a way that we can get the help to move? Or is there a way that you guys can build another trailer park around this area? So that way, we could just be moved there and help us with the cost of moving the trailers? So that way, we can all still keep our home and you guys can still keep your, um, project going on? And we can all be happy? Is there a way that we can have something like that?
We're not. This isn't a question-and-answer period, so we're just hearing all of your comments and concerns.
Okay. Well, I have not been aware of all this going on and I was just wondering if there's such a thing going on, if we could just all work together and help each other out? Instead of having to go through all these struggles that we have to be going through with families and kids and, and all that stuff, you know? So, uh, since I live there and I'm a resident there, I just wanted to share this with you guys. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? I forgot whatever I was gonna ask.
I really did. Um, she brought it up. I'm at a loss. I had it in my mind to ask and I guess, oh, I know. I'm sorry. If we're having a meeting, what are they exactly planning on building? Is this gonna be, you know, five hundred apartments and four-story buildings, five-story buildings? Is it gonna be townhomes?
We don't have a site plan on it, so this is honestly just for a rezone. We have no idea what the site plan would be.
Yeah, we have no idea. This is just a rezone. We have no other information.
Alright.
Sir?
Oh, okay.
Did you hear what he said?
Yeah, I heard what he said. Uh, I'm gonna be translating.
Mi nombre es María Reyes, trae la cuarenta y uno. Me gustaría saber el por qué van a mover las tráilas.
Uh, my name is María Reyes and I wanna know, okay? Uh, we're trailer forty-one. Uh, we're wondering why you guys are gonna be moving the trailers? I live alone with my kids. I have a house that- I wanna know why my house is gonna be destroyed and when, when I want this house to be for my kids. We're, we all have families. We understand you guys wanna bring more families. Why do you wanna take out our, out our families when you wanna bring more? Why, why do those other families have permission and we don't have permission? I wanna know why my kids have to move from one place to another when my kids are already stable that, at the, at the place we already are at. Uh, what am I gonna, gonna do now? I have two shifts. And who else is gonna help me to move my, who's gonna give me enough money to move the house from there? I, I, I have both jobs, so I can pay rent and they don't kick me out. That's all.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Harvey Day. Um, I- Yeah, it's Eight Twenty-three Twenty-third Street, Ogden, Utah. Um, so I was made aware of this, uh, rezoning application from a resident at the park. And, um, I just, I, I, the, the notice that was posted on the doors of the, of the residents did not mention an online option at all. And I think it's, it's pretty wild to, uh, expect people to be aware of something that they don't know, right? They, they didn't know there was an online option. There could have been a lot better opportunities for people to voice their concerns with this rezoning. My second concern is just like, where, where do we expect these people to go? Like, as, as we keep rezoning and keep making things less and less affordable for people, where do we want them to go? These are real human beings that are here, that have families and lives. Where do we expect them to go? They can't afford anything else, right? If they could, they probably would be somewhere else. I just, I, I think that what Riverdale City is, is attempting to do or what, what the developer is attempting to do is inhumane at, at best. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is William Gilman and I've been in unit thirteen at Riverdale Mobile Home Park for upwards of twenty years. Um, that's, I'm kind of in the same concern as everybody else. Where are we gonna go? You know, when this is over? Uh, what are we gonna do with our homes that we have? I just spent the last year remodeling my whole house because we were told we were safe. And now, all this money I put into it is gone. And, and really, where are we gonna go? I have four kids. You know, what am I gonna do? You know, I can't go, these houses that are apartments that they're gonna put in, upwards of fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month. How, how, how is anybody in here gonna be able to afford that? We just can't. You know, and I look by and all of us wave to each other and some of us talk to each other. We're, we're a nice community. I would like to keep it that way and not have it taken from us. Thank you.
We want anybody that hasn't had a chance to talk, if you wanna talk.
Uh, I'm gonna be translating again.
Will you give us your name just for the record?
Me?
Yes.
Enrique Manuel Godinez.
Okay, thank you. Where do you live?
Uh, trailer thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm Francisco Godinez. I live in trailer thirty-five. Uh, they let us buy the trailer four months ago? They didn't tell us absolutely nothing about this. I paid ten thousand dollars for the property? The, the trailer, sorry. We invested everything else we had to remodel the home. The saddest thing there is right now is that there's nobody to tell us where we're going now. We, we didn't have money to move the trailer? It's the tra, it's a trailer from the, from sixty-nine? When is there gonna be a person that's gonna give us the answer? That's all.
Hi, I'm Denise Clonton, uh, forty-two, and I'm on disability. And I, this is the only place I could go right now, is staying at my home. And if you guys take that away from me, I'll be out on the street with everybody else. And I know a lot of these late people out here, they're, they're nice people. And like they said, that is a nice area for all of us to be at. We don't fight, we don't argue. And if you guys take my home away, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I have no idea what I'm gonna do. I can't work. So, that's all I gotta say.
My name is Eric Rodriguez. I currently occupy trailer number sixteen. Uh, Taylor Berry already said we've been in the process of trying to sell it for the past four months. The new management company, uh, did take application fees, background fees, and they did not let the buyer know, uh, on, on the city code for the subsection two. It does say that the notice for this hearing did need to be sent out first-class mail. And subsection three, it also said that any residents that haven't moved in need to be aware of this as well. And they were not told. Uh, the only reason I knew about it, it was because my mom, uh, told me it was on the news. And the only reason they knew about it is because I told them. Uh, I've been trying to sell this. I, I recently put in a brand-new swamp cooler, brand-new furnace. I recently quit my job so I could go back to school full-time. And I've been paying rent at two places for the past four months. And this, the sale of the house is supposed to get me through school for the next two or three years. this, the sale of the house is supposed to get me through school for the next two or three years and without that now, I'm, I'm kinda unsure as what's gonna happen next. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Um, hi, my name is Priscilla Morrow. Um, I live on trailer eighteen. Um, I just have a lot of questions about where this is going because I've heard that, oh, none of us are gonna be able to move our trailers. Uh, we've been there for over twenty years. And personally, I have remodeled my home. I've invested more than ten thousand dollars in there. And I've been communicating with the new management and they didn't make us aware of these things until we got notes posted at our doors. So, I just wanna know if like, how much longer we're gonna be living there, if you guys are gonna continue going with this? Are we gonna have a year, two years? I just, I would like answers personally because a lot of us don't have anywhere to go. And I tried bringing this up to my child that we might have to go and he got sad. So, I just would like to know more questions, more answers, so that we can look other ways to continue on. That's all I have to say.
Hi.
You state both your names and where you live.
Yes.
Uh, my name Elizabeth Wager, I live on ten twenty-five Sullivan, Ogden, Utah.
I'm Katie Fessipiao and I live in Clinton.
Um, our mother lives there and so does our brother, um, so we're here on behalf of them and of course, everyone here. Um, this is definitely very concerning and the reasons why, that I read in an article that they are requesting this rezone, one of them was for safety issues. I mean, what does that mean? There's, I wanna know exactly what the safety issues are. Um, besides that, I, it's, my brother just lost his job. He's not gonna be able to afford to go anywhere else and neither will my mom. So...
We're just as concerned as everybody else here and we're just here kind of like in support of our family as well as all the people here in this community as well. Um, I just think that my opinion, it's about the money is why they wanna do it. Um, and it seems unfortunate and inhumane.
Immoral.
So, immoral.
Yeah, and I mean, I just, I don't, I don't understand the reasons that they stated that they wanna do this. And I think that the way that it has been communicated is not the right way. I mean, this is, what, twenty-twenty-one? There has to be better ways to tell everyone what's going on. Especially now, we were told that we'd be able to hear everything. So many people left because they could not hear, we couldn't hear at all in the other room and we weren't told it was gonna be online. So, just the communication is almost like it's on purpose and I hope this isn't a formality, but it feels like it is.
If they're feeling like it's, um, unsafe or, what was the reason?
Unsafe and for gentrification.
Um, if they're feeling like it, like it's unsafe, then I think that they should have at least given the community time to kind of work on that, especially considering COVID just happening. Just throw this on top of that, just makes it ten times worse, like...
I mean, and I'd like to know what exactly is unsafe. I mean, I just, I don't see any proof of that and I see my mom a lot, so...
Yeah, that's all, that's all. Thank you.
So, my name is Zeke Bardwell. I, uh, live at ten nineteen west forty-six hundred south. Uh, about fifteen years ago, I lived in the trailer park and, uh, of course, I'm very acquainted with many of these people, have been over the years. Hope to remain so. And I think, of course, uh, the broad opinion, of course, is that there's a lot of unknowns that scare the residents down there. I have one particular friend in the park, got a number of friends in the park, but, um, one particular friend who the insecurity of what exactly would happen to him if it gets rezoned, I think, is the scary part. And, uh, I think that, uh, I think if the residents had a better understanding of what their future would hold, then maybe that they would, uh, be more inclined to approve of a rezon. And of course, going through the process, this is going through the process and, uh, appreciate the city looking out for the residents and going through the process, listening to their opinions so that the, uh, planning commission can, can make a good decision, um, with the city council and stuff. But, uh, so I think that everybody being scared is of course the biggest concern here and, uh, um, I definitely think that, uh, if people understood what their future would hold besides, you know, they just don't know. There's too many unknowns, I believe, for these people. As far as I know, there hasn't been anything that, uh, really explains the process to these people. Um, but, uh, but having one particular friend or multiple friends in the park just flat-out scared about what their future holds within the park, that that's, uh, that's a bit rough. So, definitely don't think it's necessarily a good idea at this point. Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Alan Botharp. I'm the owner of trailer twenty-nine. I also am a Riverdale resident living on Cherry Drive. Uh, we purchased that trailer for my son who has a disability so he could be independent. But what I'd like to be very brief in my comments is that I second everything that's been said. The thing that I want to present briefly to be able to remember is I'm asking those that have in charge of being this rezoning, please check where your heart's at when you vote. Thank you.
The questions are, are, there's no questioning online. Their comments are turned off.
I showed that they're on, but I can retry it. I'm sorry. If you haven't had a chance to speak, you can come up here. I only have one comment.
What's the purpose of this hearing?
The purpose of this hearing is the owner has asked for a rezon. That's all, it's just a rezon request. To go from, it's currently zoned R, RMH one.
I'm there and it's off for me as well.
Uh, if you can't see it, it's not, it's not because we're trying not to show you.
The comments, we can't question.
You can't make questions, but you could hear and see.
Yeah.
I have one comment, but it shows me that they're on, so I don't know. I can log out on that end, but it's...
Just turn it fresh. Trouble scene.
Oh, just turn the comment thing back on.
I know, I just restarted it one second.
We're just gonna take a minute break for Sayleto. Re, rebooting two.
It shows me up in life. I only have one comment, I'm sorry. And I can see Eric Rodriguez, yes, I can see that.
I just posted a comment, yeah.
Oh, so we're on?
Do you see this comment?
Okay, thank you.
Guys, we got, we're back and running.
Does anybody else wanna speak?
You guys have a voice?
Is there a speaker here then? Is that everybody from out there has had a chance to speak?
I think so.
Hi, my name's David Nelson. Uh, I used to live in the trailer park years ago. Um, I know a couple people that live there. And personally, because of COVID, they are unable to still just maintain jobs. I know that we just received the stimulus check, but obviously, that's not enough to maintain life. Um, I just wanna reiterate, um, that this is during a pandemic and most likely, the people that are trying to claim this property and land and renovate it to apartments or houses, it's probably just a family or a business, could just be a couple people that are gonna benefit, benefit from it, but, uh, there's a lot of people in this room that are gonna be devastated by it. That's it.
Does everyone have a chance to speak that's wanted to speak?
Janine Botharp, we own trailer twenty-nine. I just have to tell you, these people are the souls of the earth. We love them dearly. They are loving and kind and help each other just like any neighborhood does. Henry next door to my son is the guy that goes around shoveling snow and helping people out. They are a beautiful, lovely community and I hope that you can be our heroes. Thank you.
For anyone else, we want everybody to have a chance to speak. If you spoke before, you can come up one more time. Please keep it under two minutes.
My name is Jan Ewing. I forgot to tell you, I was in trailer number thirty-one. I have an email from the park management dated March first. Says that they changed the property. The owners of the property have changed and they say in here that "We aim to have a clean, safe and enjoyable park for you to live in and we look forward to your help in accomplishing that." "All rules set forth in the leases, including due dates, are strictly enforced." "Any violators in park rules will be strictly enforced and the fines and other penalties." "We look forward to dealing with you guys for a long time." So, if, if you kick us out and we end up being homeless, just one more thing I wanted to say is that the average life expectancy of homeless people on the street is fifty-eight years old, which is how old I am. There are a lot of people in here who aren't gonna last very long on the street. And that's something you should consider too, please. Thank you.
So, my name is Xavier. I live in lot ten. I already spoke, but, um, so all these people got notices, right? And they said, they made a promise saying that we're not gonna move you guys. But you guys broke your promise by saying we're evicting you now and building a new, uh, condo. Why is that? That's not fair. Like, it, 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 it's really not fair. You guys just wanna take the land and build condos so you can make money. No offense, when I drive over that bridge, even if there's buildings there, I don't see it.
Sir, if you please give your voice.
I'm sorry. The reason why I'm so mad is because everyone in this room, we're all human. We're all human. Come on now. We should care about each other. We should see each other as one of us. But we're not doing that right now. And, I'm sorry. Taking homes is like taking their memories. Their life. And through all my life, I've been treated like crap. I've been put into the dirt. I'm trying to get back on my feet. And this move, yeah, it will devastate me. But these people will be devastated even more. This is honestly a disappointing thing. It really is. And I had nothing else to say.
Uh, my name is Eric Rodriguez. I live at trailer sixteen. Um, basically, the, the past four or five years, the management has changed quite a bit. And, uh, the, the new company H and H said in their zoning request that they wanted to beautify the area. But it, it was up to the management of the, the previous owners. They, they raised the rent, they promised a new dumpster to take out the vacant lots that were, uh, in a state of disrepair and they did none of that. At what point is it the residents', uh, job to make the place better if the management won't help? And how do you, as Riverdale City, uh, hope to trust this new company to say that they'll do what they'll do if the, the past three or four have done nothing? That, that's what I, all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question.
Please state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is July Vázquez and I live at six seventy-one west forty-four hundred south in Riverdale, at Leslie's Trailer Park for the past six months, I think. And I, I'm just, you know, asking myself about all this that's going on because I'm a resident there too now. If, if there's such a thing as the zoning going on, are we gonna be aware of it? Are you guys gonna allow us some time or enough time for us to even to have to move or to be able to save money or to be able to make it one way or another? Because I really don't know what's going on. I just hear about this zoning. But, and we're all kind of like panicking because we really don't know what's going on. So, are we gonna get some kind of answer today about what's really going on with the trailer, Leslie's Trailer Park or we just came so you guys can hear our stories? I'm not quite sure.
Is, is not a question and answer, it's to hear your voices?
Oh, okay, but...
And to talk about rezoning the property.
Okay, so are we gonna be letting, knowing that we, that you guys are zoning it already or that you guys are not gonna do it today or?
I could answer that question real quick, um, just, just... This is just a, a rezon request again. No residents are required to relocate or vacate trailer or the, the mobile home park at this time, even if the rezon approval happened with the city council, which is not this group. This group is a planning commission. We receive input and then we make a recommendation to city councils as a planning commission based upon all the information and the public hearing comments. So, it has not been decided at this time. It'll go to a later dictatorial city council meeting based upon the recommendation and the decision-making room of the city council tonight. And then that will be evaluated for a final decision. The city council will be the ones to make that final determination. Even if the rezon was approved, that does not impact the, any existing tenants or residents' ability to continue living in the mobile home facility at this time. Okay?
Thank you, that answered so many questions. Thank you so very much. You guys have a good night. I have to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
So, before we, before we close the public hearing, Steve Brooks, our city attorney, will have some work as well.
Well, this doesn't go to YouTube, though. It does, but it's not extremely loud, so that's the problem. If they're quiet, they will be there.
I just, because I'm sure they're gonna have... Go ahead.
State your name and address.
My name is Adriana and I live in trailer forty-nine. I just wanna say to all of us is, we're not hopeless, guys. There are resources out there. We just have to look for them. We're not hopeless. This isn't a loss of hope. We're not on death row. We may have hit ba, ground and hit bottom. My kids are watching me. Who's watching you? What do we got? Loss of hope or resources to actually look forward to, look up to. It's a dead end now. Sometimes that wall is for us to lean on, not to feel like it's a hope of loss or a loss of hope. I got kids watching me. If they rezon it, you know what I'm gonna do? Move forward. That's what we have to do.
Did you see the older gentleman in here that was divorced and didn't have anyone to lean on? That's one life. That matters. He doesn't have... We're not here for that.
This is not a question and answer, only if he wants to speak, that's it.
My name is Steve Brooks. I'm the Riverdale City Attorney. I wasn't planning on doing this, but this gentleman right here probably said the, the, the thing that was probably most important tonight. There's a lot of unknowns, including for the city. Um, this is really early on in the process. This is really early on in the process, but when a landowner comes to the city and says, "I want to rezone my property," by law, we have to give him that opportunity. And that's what tonight is. Even before this meeting, I directed the planning commission, "Don't go outside of the rezone. We can't ask them at this point what they plan on doing and all that kind of stuff." You guys probably know more than the city does as far as what their plans are. All we're here tonight for is a rezone. And it may pass and it may not. It's not uncommon for a rezone to come in and get tabled or even get denied and then brought back at a later time. So when we say there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of unknowns. We just don't know. It's really early in the game. So we couldn't even stand up here and say, "Yeah, you got a month, you got a year." We don't even know they're going to do that. We don't have any idea. And so how the process works is, is when they request this, then the planning commission looks at it. And they have to look at it, just like they have to give their justifications why this should be rezoned. And then the planning commission will either make a recommendation to rezone it or to not rezone it. All it is, is a recommendation to the city council, which at the earliest, that couldn't come up until next week, if it even does. We just don't know. And so, and I'm not trying to lessen your concerns because they're valid, and I would feel the same way if I was in your shoes, but we just don't know yet. We don't know what's going to happen. It's simply a rezone from a mobile home zoning to the R4 is what they've requested. Again, we don't even know if that's going to happen. An R4 allows certain things where one of the other zones doesn't in future development. But when that would be, that could be years down the road. We don't know. We don't have any idea. I've just made some quick notes here. Oh, as far as the communication goes, that was not, there was nothing hidden here. The city is required to make a public notice of which is what we did. A lot of these concerns that you guys are expressing here are between you and your landlord. We just follow what the law tells us to do, which is what we've done, and that's why we're having this. So we don't want to deny you your rights to be heard or to speak or to voice your concerns. That's why we're doing this. We want to hear this. But again, we just follow the law. If they come in and ask for a rezone and they meet all the requirements set in there, then we would have to rezone it. We don't have the choice or they could sue us. You see what I'm saying? But they've got to, they've got to meet the requirements for that particular zone and the justification for it. So we just don't know. I mean, we're assuming that it's even going to get rezoned tonight. May or may not happen. So I just wanted to express, I mean, some of your concerns there, just by processes, we're really early in the game. And even if it gets rezoned, that doesn't mean anything's going to happen. I mean, that's up to the landowner. So I don't know if you want me to take questions or... It's up to you. I will if you want.
Are you guys allowed, Steve, to take some questions?
I would just note that Shaylee has a comment to still read from a letter, and also there's a comment or two on YouTube that have shown up that may want to be addressed. I don't know in the proper times to do that.
But we'll bring those up before we close it, but...
Steve says we'll bring them up before we close it, but Steve's going to answer a couple of questions.
And I'll answer them if I can. Again, a lot of this is speculation, and I couldn't speculate. So did you want me to? Okay, go ahead.
Does the company H&amp;H have the opportunity to actually be here and hear everyone's concerns?
One of them's here. He's online, and he will be heard tonight. We still have to have their position presented. So you'll hear from him.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Can kids go up and speak?
Sure. I mean, it's up to the chairwoman, but I don't think she would care.
Do we know what the, like, requirements or justifications are for, like, what needs to be met?
We'll hear that tonight. That's the whole idea of why we have these hearings, so.
Can you repeat some of the questions that are being given so that we can, we're having difficulty hearing some of these questions?
I am sorry. That question right there was, "Do we know what the criteria is and what they're going to present as far as what they're going to meet their obligations?" And my response was, "Is we will hear that tonight." Prior to that, there was a question about if kids could speak. And then, what was yours?
I was just to ask if H&amp;H...
Oh, yeah. The other question was if H&amp;H was here tonight, which the response was yes.
So my question is, what's R4? I know, like, insulation, R4, but what's, like, what is that?
The R4?
Yeah.
The R4 is kind of a transitional zone. It's like you have a full high-density zone, and then you have one before that. It's kind of, it usually sits between a residential or between a commercial that kind of transitions. So it's not a full high-density. It is considered under our code, a high-density zone, which allows apartments. So that would be one of them. So if you've heard that, that may be where that came from. I don't know where it came from because we don't know that. We don't know what they're proposing. If this gets rezoned and down the road it gets approved, then they will bring in a plan later on that still gets reviewed and considered. So like I said, we're still early in the game. The question for the council members was, "What constitutes an R4?" Another question?
Yeah, are mobile homes permitted use in R4?
Well, they would become, it's not designated for it, so they would be considered a non-conforming use under the, is that correct, Mike? I think that's what we talked about before.
Yes, the term is legal non-conforming. They still have complete legal rights they had before. It's just the zoning is now different.
Right. So it doesn't affect them really...
That indefinite?
As far as what?
The, it being a legal...
Legal non-conforming? As long as that stayed that zone, it would, it would be indefinite. Yes. There are places around the city, and that happens sometimes when you rezone, that suddenly something that's there doesn't fit that particular zone, and so it's considered legal non-conforming. So we don't do anything to it. It's just, it's what it is. It still gives them rights to get insurance and things like that, so. Yes, sir?
Just wondering if there'd be any more informational things, specifically, like, directly from the landlord? Like, they're talking about information, so I was wondering where we could get...
The question is, will there be more information coming forward from the landlord on these kind of things? And that one I can't answer because I don't know.
Oh, I was wondering if that person on the board, you said there's...
The presenter, I mean, if he wants to address that as part of his presentation tonight, he can, but he doesn't have to because we are here for a rezone. And that's kind of outside those parameters, so.
Oh, I was just...
Okay. No, that's a fair question, and I would see why you would be concerned about that. I think you had one, didn't you? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I have a question. So if we move, will you guys help us pay for the movement? And will you help us move the older trailers or not?
Okay, the question is, is if they are forced to move, will we help pay for their movement and help move the older trailers? Now, are you directing that towards the city or just in general? I can answer from the city. The city would not, the city would not pay for that. Whether you work something out with the landlord or the H&amp;H or whoever it is, that's between you and them. That's not, that's not with us. Another question? You good?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Is the H&amp;H guy here present? Will we see him?
The question is, is the H&amp;H guy here present and we'll see him? You'll see him on screen, but he's joined us by video, just like all the planning commissioners. I think you had another? You good? Any others?
Gentlemen.
They're, I think they're trying to get some translation here.
So he has a question. If a person bought like a trailer that's $5,000 to $10,000, would they get paid for the trailer?
Again, that would be, the question was, would they get reimbursement on their trailer? That would be between you and the landowner or H&amp;H or whoever you worked a deal out with. It wouldn't be through the city.
So if we move out, would we have to deal with the landlord?
The question is, if they move out, who do they deal with? And it would be with the landlord, the landowner, yes. Any other questions? Did that kind of help you out, just kind of processes-wise? Like I said, there's a lot of unknowns and we're really early in the game. A lot of things could still happen. We don't even know what tonight's going to turn out like, so. And even if there is a rezone, there's a lot of things that could happen between now and anything final, so. Okay? Does that help you feel a little bit better? I know, not much better, but...
I was speaking English to you. So if you live in there, some, some, your family, they live in that part, so what are you going to do?
What would I do? Well, I would have the same concerns you have, and that's what I, that's why I said that. I don't know. I don't have an answer for you. You don't know what's going to happen yet. That's the problem. None of us know.
Probably a lot of people right here, so I have a search key number, and he can get a help. For some people, probably you have a search key number?
Yeah.
It goes to the street.
No, I understand. I understand, and those concerns were expressed tonight.
That you guys see something like different, people, like, so nice people, not doing nothing wrong, so you guys...
I understand. Okay. This will be the last one, then. We need to get on with the meeting. Go ahead.
You're having the, let us speak. Planning commission tonight. What is the process for that, after that? How long is the planning commission going to take to make their decision?
The planning commission could make a decision tonight. The question was, is what happens process-wise tonight and how long this will take? There's a number of options to them. One, they can table. Tabling means they postpone it for whatever reasons. There may be more information or something that they want. That's not uncommon that that can happen. They can make a decision tonight to either pass this on to the city council with a favorable, favorable decision or an unfavorable. Again, it still falls back into the city council's lap, whether it's a yes or a no, it still goes to the city council. Then the city council reconsideres it all over again, so.
The reason I was asking is, I know that if it's a zoning, rezoning is approved, and then they proceed with their plans, then we'll, I believe the state law says we have nine months from the time that we have us a lot to get out, so.
Right, again...
That puts us in the middle of January.
I understand that. That's, there's still a lot of hoops that would have to be going through depending on what happens. Even, even, it doesn't matter. I mean, the city council still has to consider this. Planning commission is just the first hoop that a landowner has to jump through, and that's what they're doing tonight.
I'm just kind of wondering the timeframe is...
And that, we don't know because we don't know what they're going to do.
When would the city, say they approved it?
The city council, Mike, do you have it on the agenda for next week or was that your intent?
It's indeterminate. Obviously, we have a fifth Tuesday this month, so it really is...
So probably the first Tuesday in next month?
First Tuesday in the month...
That would be the earliest it would come up.
Or third Tuesday, depending on...
Or the third. That doesn't mean even that's going to go. Because if it gets tabled, it won't go to the city council yet, so we just don't know.
So I have a question.
Yes.
They went many fires. They bought their lot, so many of them. They tried to do this. They couldn't do it because they said the city don't let them do it. But they bought their lot last month, and they did it right away. They tried to move us out. Why the other ones couldn't do it, and they did it right away when they bought it last month, and they're moving out.
Okay, I, I don't know that they can buy a lot, unless I'm misunderstanding you. They can buy the trailer, but not the lot.
They bought the whole thing.
That I'm unaware of.
So many of them. They tried to do the same thing they did.
Are any of those privately owned, Mike?
They couldn't do it. But this one, they bought it last month, and they did it.
Not that I'm aware of.
Because they did everything with the city, so they moved us out.
Okay. The only thing I can say on that is, most mobile homes only rent you a space. They don't let you buy the lot, most mobile home parks. I'm not familiar with one that does it differently, including this one, so that I don't know. I would be surprised if they did, to be honest with you.
If I may, I think she's talking about the developer buying the property last month, not individually.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I misunderstood that. Again, any developer can come in at any time, and when he owns land, he has rights when, being a landowner, to do certain things.
They did it so many times, and they tried to move us out. They could guess out. They couldn't do it. But they, they came over last month, and they did everything.
Okay.
So why the other ones couldn't do it, and they did it because they pay money?
Well, the other ones could have if they wanted to. They just chose not to.
So they went to the cities to move us out, to kick us out.
Well, they're not paying us. I mean, all we're doing is just jumping through the hoops. This is the first one that's came in and asked for a rezone for whatever reason, so. And all they do is file the same fee that they, that anybody does. Any landowner can request a rezone.
The other ones did it too. The other ones tried it too. The Nissan dealer, they bought the lot too.
I know the Nissan dealers bought a piece of that lot over there. I know that for a fact, but...
I've been there for years.
Yeah.
And I know they've been trying it for so long already, trying to kick us out. So these people came over last month.
Okay.
They bought the lot. So they kicked us out. So these people paid the city to kick us out?
No, no.
So why they did it? Why they had so special? Because they have so money?
I...
They can kick us out like that?
I'm not aware of anyone who's ever requested for a rezone on that lot, or you, Mike? So why these guys? These guys just decided to. We have to deal with it, so.
This is the first rezone request we've had. I've been working for the city for eight years, and this is the first rezone request we've had on this property since I've worked here.
One more, and then we got to wrap this up.
So does that mean, if they sell, if this gets rezoned, does that mean the city's going to get more money if they start building apartments?
No.
And you get more money themselves out of this company? Does the city also getting more money? Does the city benefit from it rezoning to this R4?
The question is, does the city get more money on a, we wouldn't, as far as an R4 goes. The only, the only thing the city would get is what property tax money we get back. I don't know, Mike, if that's different between an R4 or a mobile home park, if it's still the same. That's determined by the county. I mean, they set the rates of what we get back as far as property tax goes. I couldn't tell you if it's, it's even different, to be honest with you, because they generally look at them as lumps, pieces of property, but I don't know, to be honest with you. I'm sorry. Just hurry quick.
Could the county perceivably profit from this increased taxes from more permanent home structures?
Again, it would be that same response. It's just a matter of whatever the county assesses for apartments versus mobile home parks. And I just don't know, to be honest with you, if there's a difference. I don't know. That's handled on the county level, and we just, we don't even get involved in that. They just assess property values, and we get a certain percentage off of that, and that helps pay for our police officers and fire departments and things like that, so. Okay, I'm going to wrap that up. Thank you. On the one corner piece, right. Yeah, Ken Garf did rezone that one end that's closest to the river. I was familiar with that one, but I don't remember anybody else ever asking for a rezone.
Just to clarify, he did not rezone it. He subdivided the lot, and it retained the RMH1 designation.
Okay, so it's still an RMH.
It was not rezoned.
It wasn't rezoned, it was just divided.
That's what they were trying to do.
No, that's what Ken Garf did do.
That's what they couldn't do it. I went there, I heard everything. So they were trying to remove us too because they wanted to put the dealer in that parking lot, in that park. So they couldn't do it, they said, because the city don't let them do it for some reason. I don't know the reason why, but they couldn't do it. So they got the pitos on the side to park their cars in there.
Okay.
But they couldn't do it.
And I don't know. She's saying that Ken Garf tried to rezone that and the city denied it. I don't recall it that way, but anyway.
There was not a rezone application submitted.
I think what she's asking is, what's changed from these people being able to buy the lot or...
It's just a different landowner.
There's more money?
Just a different landowner. Some, some landowners have different approaches to things. I, I don't know. I mean, all we do is take it as it's brought to us and some landowners bring things in, some don't.
Did you have any questions when they brought this to your attention?
Questions as far as what?
Cool. Let's go ahead and just try and rezone this thing. Did you have any questions for people?
I, it's the same advice I gave the planning commission tonight. You, you look at Title X and you look at the general plan and you follow those. If those tell you you need to rezone it, you rezone it. If they don't, you don't. Same advice I give them every time on any, anything we deal with. We just follow the book, the law, what it says. And we don't know. We still don't know what they're going to do tonight. Okay? I know I'm not, you're not very convinced, but it's, it's a fact. I mean, I don't look at them any differently, so.
We're asking all these questions and you don't have answers. I'm trying to figure out what questions we can ask that you actually have answers to. So if you asked any questions when they brought this to your attention, what were those questions? But it doesn't seem like you did.
I don't. I wouldn't ask them questions at this point. The only time I would even get involved is if there was something illegal going on. And then I would get involved in it. Mr. Eggit handles these things on the, on the early parts of this thing. So I wouldn't even be involved in it normally at this stage, so. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have a motion to close?
I make a motion.
Not yet, not yet, not yet. Let's let Shaila read the letter and the comments from the YouTube public hearing before we do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the letter I had, she actually spoke during public comment. You still want me to read it even though it's the same lady?
Yes, it was, it was submitted. Go ahead and read it.
Hold on one sec, sorry. Okay, so it's from Janine Bothorp. Dear Mike Eggit and councilmembers, but she means planning commission, so. In regards to the rezoning of Leslie's Mobile Home Park, right now you have the future of valuable Riverdale citizens in your decision. We have an adult handicapped son that lives there. Leslie's was a miracle. Many of the people there are the salt of the earth. They are genuine, kind and accepting, hardworking people with integrity and courage. Please, we beg you to say no to the rezoning. The lives of these people count on you making a correct decision in their favor. If the rezoning is approved and the developer decides to evict these people, they will become homeless. They don't have the financial means to relocate their trailers. The trailers are so old that they would probably not survive being moved. The rent amounts are so extremely high, these people would not be able to afford the high rent payments. Many people have spent their hard earned money to improve their trailers and the love of their neighborhood and the community. Please don't destroy the lives of these good people. Okay, and then there's comments on YouTube. Um, Steve addressed quite a few of them, but I'll still read them. Hold on one second, guys. Okay, the first one is how are we supposed to move when we don't have the means to? Um, this one is from Nanya. So veterans, women, children, families, expectant mothers and children live here. Please consider family prosperity versus progress as being important and equal value. This is also from her. What is the timeline or timeframe for the rezoning process? The next three are from Jen Ewing, Jan Ewing, sorry. If you, if you allow the owners to rezone a lot, rezone, a lot of us will become homeless. And the life expectancy of a person living on the street is 51 years old. How many people will be getting a life sentence? Okay, my trailer is a 1992 and I've been unable to find another park that will allow my trailer. The rule of all of them is 10 years old. Nothing older is allowed. And then she asked where the owners are tonight and I just answered that they are on Via Web. Um, this one's also from Nanya. Management told the residents the park would stay a mobile home park for years and that anyone who said it wouldn't be is full of it. Which gave people the false confidence to not sell and fix their homes. This is from Jess Lopez. They are hiring the rent if we choose to stay, is all we were told. This one is also from Jan Ewing. Is there any information regarding local rules about age of trailers allowed into area parks? Please just table the request and leave our homes be. And that is all I have. I already read it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Shaila, will you poll the commission, please? You think I'd be more organized? Commissioner Wingfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Nye?
Aye.
Commissioner DeMar?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spires?
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Comments? Do we want, um, does, uh, H and H, do you want to speak?
I'm happy to give any information or questions that you have. I don't have anything in particular that I would, uh, share.
Is there anything we need to know as a commission body for the rezone?
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Steiner, how long has H and H owned this property?
Three years.
Three years? And in those three years, what have you done in an effort to maintain the integrity of the park?
Um, I am not personally involved in the management. Um, I've been involved in a few situations where there's been eviction proceedings with the court. Um, I know recently I was asked to review the city ordinances because there was a whole bunch of violations that were, uh, charged or brought up code violations and building code violations, um, to some of the structures. And the law allows the city to put that responsibility to the property owner in this situation, even though we don't own the structures. And so that, one of the people read the letter that was sent by the management company pointing out, um, that we've got to comply with the rules and things like that. Um, frankly, this rezone discussion, I was involved in it when the application was in, came up after the city code violations and some situations where we had, um, constables that wouldn't go to the park because of violent residents. Where two police officers had to be present in order to serve notice for these code violations and rent violations. So, because we have a constable service we use for that type of stuff and they wouldn't go without the sheriffs. So those are some of the circumstances and then the owners sat in a room one day and said, we need to see what else we can potentially do with this. Um, we're not able to collect all the rent. We can't enforce code violations other than through eviction. Anyway, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's not the extent of my knowledge of the ownership's actions.
Okay. Is Mr. Brooks still there?
Yes, he is.
Steve, I was just wondering, Mr. Brooks, um, does the landowner have any responsibility for, um, the condition of those units that are there in the park? Or is that a code violation for the city? My question would be, and why I, I raise the question is, uh, what confidence can we have moving forward with the zone request? If H and H has been, um, hasn't followed through with some of their obligations as a, as a landlord? What confidence can we have moving forward that if we make the zoning request that, uh, we will have compliance in the future with, with this new proposal? Should it, should it come to be?
Um, I, I guess it's kind of a two-part answer to that. I, I can tell you what our normal processes are when we have a code violation. We first will contact the tenant. That will be our, our first, because that's who we want to go after. If, if we get no results there, and we may even bring them through court and all that kind of stuff, then we will turn to the landowner at that point. And we can issue them a citation if we have to, and we have done that before if we, if we're not getting any action out of anybody. So it kind of falls on both their shoulders. Uh, like I said, we go to the tenant first because we're looking at them as the one who's ultimately responsible for a code violation. And secondarily, we would go, and that's the same thing with a house. It's not just mobile home parks. We, we look at tenants first, e- even in renters, um, in houses, and that's how, that's how we do it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
That, that was exactly our experience working with the city, what he stated. We were asked to help inform tenants and then that failing, you know, it falls to us to help, uh, clean those things up.
I know that, uh, I feel for the landowners, not the landowners, but the renters. Um, but much of this is similar to if they were renting, um, a typical rental unit without having a mobile home present. The landowner chooses to not renew that rent agreement. They have that ability and capacity to, uh, to say, I'm sorry. And the renter then has the, the choice of moving on. Um, so I'm trying to, to be fair and understanding with all parties here. But, uh, as Mr. Brooks specified tonight, our action here is to determine if they've met the bar to have the request presented further to the, the city council. So I heartfelt understand the concerns of the citizens. But unfortunately, we have to filter out the emotion behind this and deal with the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Anybody else?
Amy, do you want to go to the consideration to forward to the city council?
I think one of the facts we need to consider though, before we move on is, uh, does the R four zone qualify? Should it be in that area when it's medium density, not high density?
Are you looking for some kind of commentary, Commissioner Herman, on that or are you just making a comment?
Well, yeah, you know, I want to, you know, hear from the other planning commissioners. I, I personally, you know, don't think that, that R four fits in that, in that, uh, in that area. Uh, according to the master plan, uh, because, um, it's, R four is high density. And according to the master plan, that area should be medium density, so it should be R two or R three, uh, if anything was changed.
I believe the code, doesn't the code specify that it's medium slash high density? So it bridges between both of those, uh, those code assignments?
Not, not in this case. Commissioner Herman is correct in that the land use master plan does just say.